Oh, sorry. You ready? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting Thursday, October 9th, 2025, at the Cumberland High School Transitional Building Cafeteria at 7:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Please note for the record that Ms. Feather is absent. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes. Regular meeting, 9:25, 2025. Executive session meeting, 9:25, 2025. Enrollment report, 10:03, 2025. Residency-truancy report, 10:06, 2025. Transportation October update. School bus inspection report, 9:23, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Report of executive session meeting. Report of executive session meeting on 10/9/2025. Report of executive session votes. No votes were taken. Vote to seal minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That passes four to two with Mr. Bacon and Mr. Dean in the negative. Personnel announcements. Ms. Resick?
Hi, good evening. I have five appointments this evening. Effective October 14th, Abigail Brunel Math Essentials at McCourt Middle School, one year only, and Farah Garnum ELA Essentials at McCourt Middle School, one year only. I have an appointment effective 10/7, Catalina Chaparro, paraprofessional in the Success Program at BF Norton. Effective 10/6, Charles West, paraprofessional one-to-one in IKN at Garvin. And effective 10/15, Nellie Hamilton, paraprofessional one-to-one at Community.
Superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Just a few items for you this evening. Mike. First, we had a great event the other day, a ribbon cutting for the preschool. The preschool's now in their permanent location up here at the trans. It was a great event. We now have seven classrooms running. We have some great artwork being designed by a former student here. Just a great event. We have a principal now, Ms. Rachel, that's dedicated to the preschool. We have our very own nurse, so we're excited to have the preschool now as our ninth school. So that was a nice event. Next up, it is Principal's Month. Here they all are. Now, probably more than ever, principals have a tough job. As you know, it really can be 24/7 with the advent of social media, cell phones. So just a great team to work with. I couldn't be prouder to work with this fine collection of principals, so, thank you. As you know, these are my goals for the year. High school's schedule, construction, and school's safety. Just want to give you updates on kind of how things are starting out. With the schedule, as you recall, we had conversations around trying to find a schedule that meets the needs of more students. Students like Korean Tech kids who might want to have a job experience. Students who maybe can finish in under four years on high school experience. So currently, I'm meeting with a high school principal. The principal has a team of 17 teachers he meets with, and we're looking to give a schedule back to us to consider by around Thanksgiving. So that's all moving along. Construction, as you know, we're doing BF Norton. That's a big, big part of the work this year. But also, North Cumberland Middle School now is coming in the forefront. Next year, it'll be the last school to get a vestibule in the front. And also, a little surprise for the committee. We found a few extra dollars in finishing this summer's work at North, so we're doing over the parking lot November 9, 10, 11. It was in really bad shape, so it's being completely redone in November. So that's a great, great situation. And my last goal, school safety. Something always, I think, on our mind right now, we're looking at really a few things first. It's training. You know, how much are we training? Who is getting trained? What more can we do? Looking at building envelopes. Recently, I've walked three buildings, looking for just weak spots in our envelopes, doing that. Also, working more with EMS and police as far as tabletop exercises. That's all underway. And next, normally I would do the construction update, but tonight I will pass that over to Anne Marie Andrade at Colliers. So, Anne Marie?
Madam Chair, before Colliers shows their presentation, I'd like to know I will be recusing myself from the construction update.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Dr. Thornton. I'm Anne Marie Andrade from Colliers, Senior Project Manager. We are excited to be here to provide an update on the new BF Norton Elementary School project. This is an exciting time for this school. This is an exciting time for the students, for the faculty members, and for all of you here with this community. So we're very excited to talk about the new BF Norton school project and provide you with this update. So, you want to click? Okay, perfect. So overarching, just goals, we're going to go through our groundbreaking mobilization, our project milestones, some fun construction updates, and where we are to date. And then some of the other items that we're doing, rammed aggregate peers. We have a presentation, just to familiarize yourself of what that entails. And then our phasing and logistics plan. So groundbreaking ceremony, we had that in early September. It was a wonderful event, if you want to flip through, Mike. We had the governor there, the mayor, the commissioner from RIDE as well to celebrate and, you know, really come together as a community to celebrate this milestone for Cumberland and for the Valley and these students that are going to, you know, really thrive in their new school. We have some fun photos with the teachers, all of those officials, as we're on site there. Project milestones. So mobilization was early August. We broke ground, had our groundbreaking ceremony in September. In the winter months of 2026, we're looking to, you know, set in place our loop road to get cars off of Broad Street to help with traffic and flow during this time, to not be disruptive during school operation hours. Also, by winter 2026, we'll have our structural steel, metal decking. Spring of 2026, building will be watertight, is our goal. Summer of '27, the new building will be erected and, you know, nearly nearing completion. And then by fall of 2027, that will be the new school opening, so we'll welcome the students back into their brand-new school, and we'll be, you know, very excited to deliver that for them. Just to go through a few logistics of the activities that have been happening on site, I have Suzette Joseph here with me from our construction team at Consigly to walk through some of those items.
Hello, everyone. Suzette Joseph, Consigly Construction. So what we're seeing here is we mobilized on site, as Anne Marie mentioned, in August. We installed a temporary fence. We stripped the site. Clearing and grubbing was performed as well. Soil imports and filling and compacting is ongoing still. You know, the second image we have there, we've done site excavation. We're doing our underground infiltration system is being installed. And then we're also beginning the ground improvements and testing that was required for that, and the rammed aggregate peers that we'll tell you about shortly. So if you click through the images here, you'll see the existing BF Norton with some of our work happening in the background. You can go through, Mike. Just showing the underground infiltration system going in towards the back of the school there and the filling of the site to just bring the site up to grade. So as you continue to just go through, you'll just see that we're working on compaction as well for the site and essentially just importing soils and working through our underground logistics right now.
And just to speak to the underground infiltration system, if you go back one or two, Mike. So this area that is there in the yellow, so that is really for stormwater drainage, for those of you who are unfamiliar with it. So it's really to help with the drainage system at this site. It was designed to stand the 100-year storm, so all of those tunnels and areas that are underneath there will collect and store water. And then if it ever fills up, you know, planning for 100-year storm, then we have a pump system that will pump out and connect to the public manhole on Forest Avenue. So these are some of the things that we're doing to alleviate a lot of the drainage issues that are currently at the school and planning for the future to have, you know, a wonderful outcome at this site.
So one of the things that we're currently working on, as you can see in the image, in one of the images, is our ground improvements required throughout the footprint of the entire building. We have to do rammed aggregate peers. And with me today is Tom from Keller. He's just going to walk through a presentation on what that looks like.
Good evening. My name is Tom Biatmarz. I'm a Senior Project Manager with Keller. We are a specialty geotechnical construction company. Next slide, please. So on this project, we've been contracted to install aggregate peers. They're a form of ground improvement. There are columns of stone that are used to reinforce existing unsuitable soils. In this case, it's what's known as undocumented fill. It was fill that was placed decades ago with no record of how it was installed. So what aggregate pairs do, they improve bearing capacity and reduce settlement. In this picture here, you get an idea of what they look like. On this job, they're 30 inches in diameter. We pre-drill down to the bottom to suitable material. This rig comes in, it installs them. It's known as a vibroflot. It vibrates as it goes down. Stone comes out the bottom, it re-penetrates, and then come all the way back up to the top. And this is what you're left with. So the nice thing about this is that it's a relatively inexpensive method to allow for shallow foundations in traditional earthwork. Thank you.
So thank you, Tom, for that quick presentation there on rammed aggregate peers. So what we're looking at right now is just the next phase of our site logistics. As you can see, we'll have the loop road in this winter to allow the cars for pickup and drop-off to go around the construction and start to essentially look like what the final phase of construction will look like. And Mike, if you can flip through a couple of the phases. Essentially, throughout these phases, we are windling away towards the front of the school parking lot and towards the end, this is how the school will look essentially. The loop road will be, in yellow, is the pickup and drop-off for parents, and in blue are the bus pickup and drop-off.
So yeah, so again, this is essentially the project. We're excited to be here and speak with you and just to celebrate this wonderful milestone of all the hard work that this team has done and working together with this community for the students and the teachers of this district. Again, you know, we've gone through, we've met with our building committee, have our GMP approval. We're here. We have everyone lined up and ready to go and deliver this new school for these students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Fiscal Management Subcommittee update. Ms. Smith?
Good evening.
Oh, sorry. One second. Mr. Bacon, we got to get, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Fiscal Subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We do have payment of the bills, and we do have some resolutions that we'll be discussing a little further in the agenda. So far, the beginning of the school year has been going well. Facilities is up to date, and work has been done there. The UCOW budgeting information from last year is being finalized to send it to the audit as well. So we're moving right along. We do have an open position in our facilities team, so that, I think, went up as a job posting today. And if anybody's out there that is interested in working for this fantastic school system, please go in and apply.
Thank you. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee update. Ms. Feather is absent this evening. Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Goldstein, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to say that we have our next Policy and Procedure meeting on October 21st.
Thank you very much. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update. Our next meeting is October 28th, 2025, and District Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting. Ms. Shea?
We moved our first meeting over down to October 30th.
Thank you very much. Old business discussion and a vote to approve memorandum of agreement for foster-grandparent program. Dr. Thornton?
We have a guest tonight to talk about the foster-grandparents. Melissa Salt?
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Doosso. I'm the Director of the Foster-Grandparent Program, and my office is located in West Warwick. So I want to tell you, I watched the last school committee meeting. You read lots of questions, and they were very warranted. When I first started working here, foster-grandparents, people thought you were fostering a grandparent, and clearly, that's not the case. So what our program does is we recruit older adults, age 55 years old and older, within the community. Our office services from Westerly to Windsocket, so we recruit seniors throughout the state. We provide intergenerational opportunities for them to work with students. They're essentially classroom grandparents, either a classroom grandpa or grandma, and they serve as role models in the classroom. They're mentors, they work with teachers, they're teamed up with teachers in a school. So we place them in a school within three miles of their home and team them up with a teacher in the class. So they would essentially just work with that teacher. Some volunteers have their own desks in classrooms. Some volunteers work in small groups with students, and they serve a wide range of age groups, so from preschool to high school. Some choose to work in high school settings, which I think is great because you don't always see that. They usually want to work with the younger students. Currently, we have 35 volunteers in 20 different school locations. And again, my office is located in West Warwick, but if we were to recruit volunteers for schools in Cumberland, those volunteers would be from Cumberland, and they'd be no more than three miles from their home. So I know you guys had a lot of questions about the MOUs and the timeframes and the contracts, like what that meant. So the contracts themselves are to essentially make sure I'm holding up my end of the bargain in the office. I'm recruiting, I'm interviewing volunteers, I'm checking to make sure that they're going to be kind and loving in the classroom, that they're not going to cause any problems for the teachers or the schools. You know, you want them to be helpful, not cause more problems. So we interview them several times. We do all of the background checks in the office. We provide them with orientation, so they know exactly how they're supposed to behave in a classroom and where they stand in the classroom. And then essentially, the other part of the MOU for the schools, it's to ensure that our volunteer is safe while they're in school, that we receive, we have to hand out evaluations for the volunteers, and as a federally funded program, collect data. The data isn't names, it's not addresses, it's essentially numbers. We want to know certain children hit these certain categories. And then at the end of the year, we want to see what the outcome was. How much did these specific students benefit from having this foster-grandparent in the classroom? So we want it to be a collaborative effort. If at any point the schools say, "This is not working for us," even though that MOU has a three-year date on it, that school can tell us right away. This isn't working for us. And if it's not working for you, we'll pull the volunteer right out, no questions asked. And there could be times where we team up a volunteer and a teacher, and it just doesn't jive. Their personalities don't work together. But the principal still thinks they're a good fit for the school. We're happy to work with the principal to place them in a new classroom. And with the MOU, that does not mean my office has full reign to a school. We're not just going to show up one day at the door with a volunteer and say, "Well, you signed an MOU. Here you go. Here's your volunteer." That's not how we would handle that. We would contact the principal and say, "We have this volunteer. Here's the hours that she's available. Here's where we think her strengths are. We're open for the principal to have an interview with the volunteer as well," and then find a good teacher that would be a good fit for them to work together. Anytime we place a volunteer in a new school, we always do 30-day evaluations. We'll check in with the teacher, we'll check in with the administrator, and we check in with the volunteer because we want it to work for everyone. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and we're okay with that. But it's really odd that it doesn't work. We do pay our volunteers a small stipend. It's $4 an hour. It's at no cost to the district. We handle that through a federal grant, and we pay them a small stipend for their travel. So we handle all the background checks and fingerprinting. If you require a yearly background check, we do that with the Attorney General's Office. We handle that, and we'll send it directly to the school before school starts, so it's all set. We do do periodic site visits. We'll check at the beginning of the year, drop off the beginning-of-the-year paperwork, check in with the teacher. We find face-to-face. You find out more information than you do in an email, so we try to make sure we show up, make sure that relationship's working for the school, the teacher, and the principal. And we do that again toward the end of the year to wrap things up, to make sure that it's still working. In some cases, teachers keep volunteers for 20 years, the same volunteer when it works. So once the relationship is built, it's built with the students, but it's also built between the volunteer and the teacher. So after the three years, or if you decide three years is too long, that's fine, too. You know, we can make an exception. I wouldn't let that make our relationship not work. We would have to schedule an in-person meeting with whoever is signing the MOU. In some cases, it's the superintendent, and in other cases, it's the principal. We like to meet in person, to go over, see how everything went, and then we can decide then in person if you want to continue the relationship. But again, the MOU can be canceled at any time. And just because you don't like one particular volunteer, if it was to not work out, that doesn't cancel all the paperwork until you tell me you want to cancel the MOU. We're a standalone entity. We don't work with the PELS program. Okay, so the specific placement, I know you had questions, is this volunteer just for Ashton? So there was one particular volunteer that knew a teacher's aide that worked at Ashton. They had worked, they had volunteered at different capacity before. So she, that one particular volunteer, was for Ashton, and it would be up to the principal when she speaks to the staff on who receives that placement, but that would be their relationship. She would stay in that classroom and work directly with one particular teacher at Ashton. But I did have two other volunteers. I noticed BF Norton walked up here last time. You had, so I had one that I was trying to place at BF Norton. She's a Spanish-speaking volunteer. I thought she'd be a good fit there, so I contacted that principal, and it would be up to her if she'd like to go along with that. And I did contact Community School as well, but I think the volunteer that I had had a name of a staff member that worked there, and it just happened to be a coincidence. So they said that they weren't interested right now, which is fine. We can, you know, reach out again at a different time. But, and there was one more thing. BF Norton said that my volunteers were retired teachers. That's not the case. My volunteers are low-income seniors. They may have been a teacher's aide if I got lucky, but usually, they are just wives that never worked, and they're just looking to give back to their community now that they don't have children anymore. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So you said that you're a standalone. Are you just standalone in Rhode Island, or are you standalone on a federal level?
On a federal level, yes. We're AmeriCorps senior, and I run, right now, my program's the Foster-Grandparent Program, but it's in all 50 states.
Okay. And then, I'm so sorry, I did have a few. Can I?
No, go ahead.
I can guess. So how are you recruiting or how are you advertising for it? Because we have a senior center here in town that we've had a lot of discussion about, like, how can you get involved and get the seniors at the senior center involved? Because they're a very active group.
Right. We do visit all the senior centers, and we hang out, we hang up information, like PM lets with little tiers on them so they can contact us. We leave handouts at as many senior centers as we can go to. We also visit breakfast locations that we think seniors would visit, YMCA's, libraries. We post on social media. So we really try our best to make sure everybody knows that our program exists.
And are the volunteers required to go in every single week, or is it just a flexible schedule?
No. Okay, so the requirements for our program is you have to be at least 55 years old or older. You have to fall within income guidelines. It's pretty much, right now, I think it's about $31,000 a year if you're single. And you have to be able to volunteer at least 15 hours a week. So typically, for our volunteers, in most cases, it's three days, it's three days a week, or some prefer the shorter shift, five days a week.
And then as far as the memorandum goes, if we determine we want to try this, can we do that for one year and not a three-year?
I'm fine with that, if that's how you'd like to start. But typically, it's just easier for everyone to not have to meet every year, because then I have to schedule on a point. You know what I mean? And it kind of takes the principal or the superintendent. If the MOU expires, we have to stop, so we have to make sure we can get the renewals done within a reasonable timeframe.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Shea?
I just wanted to know if this program has been affected by any type of federal grants that had been cut?
Currently, no. We were delayed. Took us a little while to get our money this time around, but we did receive it. But it is federally funded, so, you know, if funds are cut, funds are cut. So we do, we hope for the best. This was the first time we've had a significant delay in receiving our funding, and we weren't sure if we were going to continue this year, but our funds did finally get released three years, three months late, so, but we did get our funds.
In the event that that did not take place, what would have happened with, like, say, if we had this contract fulfilled with you?
If our program closed, the contract would become void, but schools would have the opportunity to keep their volunteers if they chose to, if that relationship worked between them. Obviously, they wouldn't get a stipend anymore.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goldstein?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting to us. The only question that I had, because everything else was answered, was if we were to enter into a contract for a volunteer with you, does that preclude us from working with, if we wanted to have our own relationship with, say, the senior center, that if they did not want a contract with you, does it?
Oh, no. You can have any volunteers, yeah, you can choose to have a foster-grandparent volunteer and then an outside volunteer, too. That wouldn't hold you just to us.
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, just one more question.
Sure.
Because you mentioned the 15 hours a week, and sometimes that could be difficult on different people. Is there any adaptability in that with you if we had somebody who was interested, maybe to just do one day a week?
Not for our program. Typically, if someone has been with us a really long time, we've had volunteers stay with us until they turned 100 years old. So in that case, we do make exceptions, but typically, it's 15 hours a week.
Any other questions from the committee? To the pleasure of the committee.
I would make a motion to approve, but I'm going to ask, I do want to make an amendment to the three years to bring it to one year to begin.
So I think you can just make a motion to approve, but only on a one-year. You don't have to amend anything. You just, that's the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the limit of one-year set.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to approve with a one-year limit. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Thank you very much for your time. Next discussion and our vote to approve the 2025-2026 bus route. Dr. Thornton?
Some folks gave questions. Ms. Walton, over the past several days, I believe she answered the ones that were pending. So... So we're looking for approval. Once again, by policy, I believe you have 45 days, so you could do it tonight, or I believe you could wait one more meeting if you needed to. But right now, I think there are no pending questions.
To the pleasure of the committee. Motion. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve. I know that there were a lot of discussions, so I don't know if there's any further discussions, but I will make a motion to approve.
Ms. Smith makes motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Mr. Adams, did you have a question? Okay. No, you're fine. Okay. Next is comments from the public. I just want to go over this again one more time for anyone that came in. Please sign up on the yellow paper. You have three minutes to speak at max. We do time it. Please state your name, your address. And per policy, we go max of 60 minutes. If it's going past 60 minutes, we need a majority of the school committee to vote yes to go past 60 minutes. In addition, the committee generally normally does not respond. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. So any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cherry. I'm the Assistant Executive Director at Builder Island. We're a labor management coalition comprised to advocate for the United Construction Industry. I appreciate you all's time this evening. We all recognize how important it is for the BF Norton School to be built on time. As referenced in the college presentation tonight, there's tight timelines and site restrictions. Builder Island and the members of the building trades have been good and transparent partners under the state, dozen municipalities, and our higher educations when they have needed to build large-scale construction projects, which, by definition, BF Norton is. We have a proven track record to ensuring large-scale construction projects are built on time. And that process starts with conducting an independent feasibility study to ensure that the community, the community is doing everything it can to eliminate risks in the construction project. There are clear and inherent risks on any construction project, though one of those risks is access to highly skilled labor. We have advocated for the past two years for this project to conduct that feasibility study to determine if a PLA should be utilized. You all have gone so far to even, to even put the PLA, the possibility of PLA, in your RFP, to solicit your construction team management, your construction management team, excuse me. But now the school department has abandoned your own plan, and now there is new possibilities of risk of financing, construction timelines, and access to labor. All we're asking is this body to table the GMP vote, Agenda Item Number 11, Section D, in order to hire a nonpartisan, independent professional needed to conduct the proposed study. We are not asking to implement the PLA. Let the study do that for you. It will recommend it or not. We're asking the professionals to do that for you. You all have the fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers of Cumberland and the state as it is financing 55% of this project. This project will be completed on time if utilized under a PLA. Do what is right by the taxpayers, table tonight's vote, and conduct the study. Thank you.
Forgot what order we signed up in, so good afternoon or good evening, I should say. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. My name is Justin Kelly. I am a resident here in town. I live on West Hurry Lane with my wife and my two daughters, Abigail and Fiona, who are students here in the district, or Fiona will soon, soon will be. I'm here not only as a resident, but as a labor leader that lives here in town. I represent the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades. We represent skilled professionals in the finishing industry, painters, drywall finishers, glazers, bridge painters, and a variety of other crafts. I'm also here in representation with my brothers and sisters from the rest of the trades, the Rhode Island Building and Construction Trades Council, of which 10,000 residents live here in the state of Rhode Island. I want to talk about what a project labor agreement is briefly to you, and I will keep myself on time, Ms. Chair. I do appreciate a prompt meeting. I think there's a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there about what a project labor agreement is or isn't. And again, the ask here is simply to have an independent feasibility study performed, because that is, really, you have nothing to lose with that. A PLA is an upfront quality assurance process, all right? And construction quality assurance is something that is very important, ensuring that the job is done right, done once, done right the first time around. They're nonexclusionary. They allow anybody on a public works project, any contractor or worker, to work on them. There's terms and conditions that are set forward. They're not more expensive. On a public works project, prevailing wages must be paid. So there is no increase of cost at a labor rate. If anything, they're a cost savings, because the reality is, is that the men and women that are in this room here tonight go through registered apprenticeship programs, where they spend three, four, or more years learning their craft. We have work rules that ensure productivity. Gone are the days, hearkened from another time, where someone could come and not work and keep a job. Let me tell you, we are one of the most competitive industries that exist here, anywhere in this state. A PLA provides certainty for you. Certainty of delivery, certainty of professionalism, and certainty of quality. You will get an on-time, on-budget project. I was very dismayed to see that my daughter's school almost did not open on time at community. I walked that project as a business agent several times. I was appalled at some of the things that I saw there, things that could have been prevented, things when you have a project labor agreement, you make a call, and you get labor from the hall. We come down, and we get it done. The fact is, here in town, there's also been a series of unfortunate circumstances of wage theft on public works projects. One of the largest cases in recent history, almost $1 million in wages were stolen from workers with a kickback scheme between H.V. Collins Superintendent and a carpet company that was exploiting immigrant workers. A project labor agreement is the only methodology that will allow you to ensure that there is no wage theft or criminality on your job. Just wrap it up for you real quick, just to say that again. Local jobs for local people, career opportunities for veterans, career opportunities for people here in the town. We don't want to be an outlier. 90% of the communities here in the state have undergone feasibility studies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if I was next or not. So thank you, Madam Chair and committee members, for the time to speak. My name is Joe Walsh. I'm the Business Manager of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 99. I represent over 1,000 men and women in the trades that.
Your address, I'm so sorry.
53C Danielson Pike, Foster, Rhode Island.
Thank you.
I represent, in Cumberland, I think we've got about 60 members that are your constituents in Cumberland. So part of this is historical, and part of it is educational, which is appropriate being in a school, right? So in 2002, a law was passed to require feasibility studies for PLA projects. We could debate all day whether it was a good law or a bad law, but the reality is, that was to protect the taxpayers. So municipalities couldn't just hand out PLAs and have favoritism and things like that. So you go through the process, which is independent, third-party. There is no influence from us or contractors or anybody else. And then you, when it's done, you have a feasibility study that says, this is a good idea to have a PLA, or it's a bad idea to have a PLA. Now, since that law was passed by people who didn't like PLAs, 54 studies have been done on municipal projects, 54 have recommended a PLA. A project like this is about double the size of the minimum standard for a PLA, so it only really makes sense. But what I've heard a couple of times today from people who've called me about this from the town, have asked me some very special questions. They want to know, they said, if you have a PLA, non-union can't bid the job. That's an outright lie. Non-union is absolutely can bid the project, just like union contractors. They told me they would have to pay benefits if they were non-union to the union and to their own workers. Another lie. That is 100% untrue. You, there is no double benefits that are paid on a PLA. The other thing is, the question is, the cost would be more. Well, why would the cost be more? The prevailing wage. The prevailing wage is the same on a PLA as it is on anything else. The GMP that was done already had to be priced on prevailing rate. There is no other option. The only way that anybody could be lower than prevailing wage would be to exploit the workers and have some other plan of, you know, outweighing apprentice ratios and doing a number of different tactics that they could get. But the price should be the same, so there is no harm to it. So I don't know why we wouldn't spend the two, between two and four weeks to get a PLA done for a project of this magnitude that is going to last this long and serve this community for the next 60 years. To me, it only makes sense. So that is all I have to say, and I thank you for your time, and I think I made it under time, which is unusual for me. Thank you.
Please state your name and address in three minutes, please.
I'll be under three minutes. Thank you. My name is Joseph Coparko. I live at 216 Burnt Hill Road in Hope, Rhode Island, and thank you for your time tonight. So while I didn't have any prepared remarks, I wanted to speak after hearing the superintendent speak about your future plans regarding some training and some of your initiatives. I commend you in investing in training your people. One of the major roles of a project labor agreement, it has what we refer to as our four-year degree, apprenticeship. So my day-to-day activities for my union is, I'm an apprenticeship coordinator. I recruit and help train the future workforce for my local union, but also for the building trades. We do this in conjunction together. What this does for young men and women from this community, having a PLA that has requirements for apprenticeship, it gives them an opportunity to earn middle-class sustaining wages, benefits. They come out of school with no debt. So while the students that graduate from this very school would be building this future school, it also teaches them how to be part, members of the community. A lot of the individuals that are here with me today, my brothers and sisters, are coaches, volunteers. Our union activism is giving back to the community, and that's exactly what a PLA does when it refers to the apprenticeship requirements and language. Local individuals building their community and becoming part of their community. So I implore you, like the last speaker did, please, two to four weeks for something that's going to be here long after any of us. Do your job, two to four weeks, do the feasibility study.
Hello, my name's Greg Mancini from 61 Main Street, North Kingston. I work with Anthony Cherry, Builder Island. We're an advocacy group of the entire union construction industry. They say a picture's worth 1,000 words. And if you look over here, you can see a picture, and I think it says more than 1,000 words. We've got a lot of local people, all local people, just want to work for a good-paying, middle-class job on a level playing field. And they're here because they believe in that work and also the work of project labor agreements. As I think Joe Walsh said, well, first of all, we want to be respectful of your time, and that's why we're all not going to testify. A lot of people said, made good points that don't need to be repeated, but as Joe Walsh indicated, there's a process to determine whether or not it's in the best interest of your community and the taxpayers to consider an all-union or just a project labor agreement. And we think you should go through that independent process, because we think at the end of the day, it will save you time, it will save the taxpayers money, and it'll ensure, it will actually eliminate risk, any labor-related risk. So as Mr. Coparko said, two to four weeks to complete a study, figure out one way or the other, let the professionals aside, and then go from there. And if you do that, I'm sure that your project will be very successful. Thank you very much.
How's it going? My name is Pablo Santos. My address is 39 Patuck Avenue, Patucket. I'm actually new in the union. I actually just signed my name because I heard everybody talking about just training and, you know, how everybody likes to have their, you know, every worker that's going to make the school, right, be competently trained and all of that. So I work, I'm a glazer, so we fix windows. We go to schools, and every single time we go to a school, you know, the guys, well, the people will tell us, hey, you know, the school was built in 2006, you know, there's no reason for everything to be falling apart, you know, stuff like that. And it always comes down to, you know, they are projects that are not built by union, you know? This is the third night I spend doing stuff for the union. Two of these nights was in training. We're training how to move glass, how to install it, how we're going to install the curtain wall, which, in the pictures that I saw, it was that vestibule that you guys were talking about. We were just learning that. It's my first, I just finished my first year, and I wanted to say, just training is very important. And when I came in here, I thought we were going to come and argue back and forth, you know, that's what it felt like, right? But, you know, I'm sorry, I know you as Amy. I was actually an employee in the company, Dr. Daycare. You know, as soon as I sat down and I saw you, I knew we were going to be heard, because she runs a really good company. It was my favorite place that I've worked for, you know? Don't tell my boss. But, you know, main thing, every single time you stepped over there, the office, you know, they were on you. Hey, have to train for this. You have to learn how you're going to talk to the kids, how you're going to, you know, how you're not supposed to spray the kids with a hose, you know? It was, it was a daycare, but, you know, every single little thing that we were supposed to do, we were trained on. So I know, you know, I'm no politician. I'm not going to talk to you about PLA, this and that, right? I'm just a working bee, that's all. But I wanted to say, you know, we are all trained. Every, you know, I spend two, three times a week, you know, I'm skipping class today to be here, matter of fact. But I just wanted to say, you know, we are being trained almost daily. We are competent, we're workers, you know? We're all one family, like they have said, and we're just here to, you know, prove that all we want to do is work, finish the job, do it right. We want to be safe. We want the workers in the place to be safe, and, you know, we are trained to be, you know, I spent one year, and now I'm learning how to install glass, you know? One year, how to correctly put my hard hat on, how I should never take my glasses off, and how my hands are the most important thing that I have, right? And I just want you guys to know that. I think that's what it all comes down to, and that's from what I picked up. That's what I think it's all about, you know? We are here to build safely.
Three minutes is up.
All right? Well, thank you so much for your time.
My name is Greg Despigno. I live at 75 Colonial Ave in Cumberland. I'm an electrician for IBW 99. My son will be going to kindergarten at Garvin Elementary School next September, and I even worked at Ashton Elementary School during its renovation a couple of years ago. A big reason I moved to Cumberland was because of the schools, and a big reason why I joined the union is because it's a fair deal. Everyone gets paid the same, everyone gets the same benefits, follows the same rules, and we go home safely. The PLA was designed to protect all workers, union and non-union, to make sure that everyone follows the rules, gets a fair deal, and goes home safely. So voting for the PLA is a vote for workers. Thank you.
Ms. Shea, good evening. My name is Michael Sabatoni. I am the General Secretary Treasurer for the Labor's International Union of North America, representing about 550,000 men and women across the United States and Canada. I am also the President of the Rhode Island Building Trades. I've been the President of the Rhode Island Building and Construction Trades Council for 20 years. I've negotiated in excess of 50-plus project labor agreements worth about $15 billion in the state of Rhode Island on large, complex construction projects. And project labor agreements are simply a mechanism. They're a tool, to use a trade term, a tool to make certain, to give certainty in a very uncertain industry and uncertain times. We all remember a few years or so ago when COVID hit our society, and there was a lot of uncertainty. The only projects that went and continued to be manned with certainty, and people showed up every day and laced them up and were deemed essential workers, and we were able to coordinate rules and regulations across the whole industry on these project labor agreements during COVID, was a mechanism to give certainty. We didn't lose any man-hours other than when people would come down with COVID. We were one of the few industries that stayed up and running in a very We were one of the few industries that stayed up and running in a very uncertain time. So my suggestion to you as the school committee is to do your job and explore through the feasibility study and not be an outlier. The communities across the 39 cities and towns of the state of Rhode Island have done these studies and have deemed, especially on large construction projects, that they are a tool to deliver certainty, certainty of manpower. It standardizes, there's 16 or 17 trades that are going to work on this project, whether there's a PLA or not. They have 17 different contracts with 17 different holidays and shift differentials and all kinds of things where, when we put these agreements together under project labor agreements, it standardizes all 17 trades. Last thing I would mention, the current administration in Washington has done a lot of things to hurt working people. But even that administration that has no, in my opinion, respect for hard-working men and women, decided to do one thing correct. And that is, they did not revoke the Biden administration project labor agreement implementation on large, complex, public works projects for the federal government. So that is something that I think you need to consider. So all it is, is you do your study, do the certainty, and make sure that you're going to get the best product and delivered on time, on budget. The only way that you can do that in the construction industry on large construction projects is with a project labor agreement. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Next is new business. The vote on the superintendent's contract, we are going to take no action this evening. Discussion and our vote to approve resolution SC-R-2025-04, supporting the work to change high school schedule in the best interest of students. There was a resolution in the drive. I'm going to read the resolution. Cumberland School Department Resolution, Resolution supporting the work to change high school schedule in the best interest of students, be resolved by the Cumberland School Committee as follows. Whereas, the school committee believes that the current high school schedule does not allow students the flexibility necessary to thrive in the 21st century education model. Whereas, the school committee has made updating the high school schedule one of the superintendent's goals. Whereas, the school committee is aware that the administrative team is currently working to make changes to high school schedule that will benefit our high school students as they pursue more diverse learning objectives than were available when the current schedule was implemented. Whereas, the school committee believes that a change to the high school schedule as described above is directly related to the essence of the Cumberland School Department's educational mission, and we endorse administrative work in this regard. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Cumberland School Committee supports the work to change the high school schedule. Be it further resolved, the Cumberland School Committee will advocate for the best interests of students. Pleasure of the committee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Bacon makes motion? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and our vote to approve homeschool instruction request for 2025, 2026 school year, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Shea, any discussion? All approved. Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and/or vote on GMP award to Consigly Construction for the new BF Norton Elementary School project in the amount of $43,279, $498. Pleasure of the committee? Ms. Smith?
And I'm not sure who can answer the questions. I have quite a few just in questions this evening.
Oh, I'm so sorry. One moment, please. I'm sorry. Mr. Bacon, you need to recuse.
As stated before, as I am employed by a company working on this project, I have to accuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon.
United we stand, divided we fall.
Ms. Smith? Oh, sorry.
Ms. Smith?
So Dr. Thornton, I'm not sure if you're going to talk to this or Henry's going to talk to this or not, but I do have questions related to the GMP.
Sure.
So the GMP itself and what's been projected, how does that compare to the expectations given when we did the bond approval and town council approved it and it went out to the voters?
I'm sorry, I don't follow your question.
How does the costing in, the pricing in the GMP compare to what we had stated with the bond?
The GMP is coming in on budget within the bond.
Is there a built-in window in there for any project changes or anything like that with the cost?
Any project, they have contingencies. For example, in this project, there's a set amount for soil, our different areas have different contingencies. We have money built in for any unforeseen circumstances.
And right now, what are we looking at for the estimated return from the state on the completion of this project?
Currently, the base is 39.3. As you recall, it's a little higher, but Cumberland has gotten more affluence. We went down with our base number, but with three bonus points, we're up to 54.3% reimbursement on that. So on the project of $43 million and change, we'd get back around $23 million from the state.
And then my other questions, I think, are going to be much more related to the actual GMP that was presented to us or provided to us in our files. I do have some questions on that. And if others had questions for Dr. Thornton first, I'm happy to, I could ask the microphone. Okay. So I went through and I read through everything in here, and I know it's been mentioned tonight to prevailing wage. So I'm just wanting to know here, how, how has this been put out for an RFP or for pricing on the jobs? Is it, it's already gone out to market?
Yes. So the original RFP in there, we, we always state it's up to the town that they may do a PLA or not. For this particular project and the amount for this GMP, we do have prevailing wage in there. Consigly is signatory with carpenters and laborers. So currently, we already have a mix on this project.
And from that mix, I, the bids that are out there, you're looking at the quality, you're looking at their what, like licensing, what are you, what are you including in with that? When you do a review?
Any of that?
Sir? Thank you.
Sure. We review the full scope of work based on the specifications and the drawings that are provided by the design team, along with any phasing requirements for the project, capability, manpower, and schedule requirements for the project as well.
So how do you look at the people who put in bids for this project? How we, how you, how are you assessing that or bringing that to the building committee or then to the school committee for approval? How do you assess those, the parties that bid on the jobs?
Yeah, so we perform scope review meetings with the parties that bid on the job. The design team and Colliers is a part of those de-scope meetings. And then previously, we've presented several packages to the school and building committee for approval. And during that approval, we provided backup documentation, including the scope of work that leveled out all of the bidders.
And how do you assess the companies that are bidding? How do you assess them to make sure, you know, right licensing? I mean, what's included with that? Because that's probably not in the scope part.
So our company has a pre-qualification process in which we have people that are specifically hired to handle pre-qualification for companies going through their insurance background, funding, billing, processing, overall company structure, schedule, safety requirements are all rigorously gone through by the pre-qualification department.
Does that include referrals and references to other jobs from those parties that are bidding?
Yes, it does.
Speak for a moment.
Anyone else? I do have a question. I, because I understand every, all the constituents and everyone that's came up here and voiced their concern this evening, and I hear what they're saying completely. With the feasibility study, how would that impact the GMP? I'm assuming it would maintain it because if it is by prevailing wage, that it wouldn't increase the GMP that's already been presented to us.
So that, I can't speak to that specific question or answer if it, you know, if it will stick to that number or not, just time-wise, where we are to date, where, you know, everyone's pretty much ready to go as we're moving forward with the project. I don't know if that specifically answers your question.
And the people ready to go, what is the percentage, what is the mix percentage of union and non-union?
I don't have that, that number.
Any other questions?
There is a mix.
There is a mix.
There is a mix of between.
Correct. We have prevailing wage and Consigly's signatory with union, with carpenters and laborers. So there's already labor agreements on the project right now and will be within this GMP.
So I, I know, and I haven't been involved with the PLA, so I apologize. I have been involved with RFPs, but please excuse my ignorance on this level of it all. So if we're going to be looking, I think it was mentioned, two to four weeks to go do a feasibility study, what, what does that do to our project? Do we have, is it just a pivot that will need to happen?
Pretty much. It'll be a pivot from where we are to date with our schedule and, you know, having to work around that timeline. Some of the long lead time items that are, you know, pending upon this GMP approval will, will be delayed or have to wait.
If I could add to that, I think to me, it would be concerning in that our meeting's two weeks from now, and then you're talking about that, you know, two to four-week component. We're already on a tight timeline, as you all know. And if you do have some of those critical lead times not met, certain vendors not on board, you do run risks. Our biggest concern, I guess for me, would be the June 30, 2027 substantial completion. We have to be mostly done the job to get ride reimbursement. And to me, it sounds like it's a small thing, just two or four weeks, or say, you know, with two weeks, so there's maybe six weeks. It could have a profound effect on hitting that June 30 date. And just for a little background, as you know, the town schedules that money over several years with a bond schedule, and they're relying on that money to hit it on June 30, 2027. So we can't miss that date. So that would be concerning to me to wait that long.
Sorry. Do you want to ask Chris? Well, Dr. Thornton, to that point, that is probably one of my biggest concerns is not meeting that date because if we remember with our other construction projects, the identification of the wording substantial completion has never been identified, and it went down to waiting for the last reapproval on a fire that before it would even be looked at to be substantially completed, when the rest of an entire school was substantially completed or completed and ready. So I'm just wondering, do you think we're going to see the same issue with that wording from Ride, or have they given more guidelines?
I actually spoke to Maricarino today about this, and he was pretty emphatic. It's state law, June 30 is June 30. If you miss it, you get the money, it's just a year later. But the town right now has scheduled this over several years, and they are currently relying on the $23 million in the bond schedule for that following year. So that's how they plan it right now.
So if the feasibility was studied, study was done, could that be put into what we would get from the PLA regarding the timeline, meeting the GMP that we, the $44 million max, that the timeline's going to be by this, and all of that stuff would be put in there and scope of service would be the same? So if you have a playground, I'm making this up, 20 by 20, this would not take away from the space that the children could use outside, that it would all be the same? Sir, sir, I, I appreciate you, but I, I just can't, I'm, so, Dr. Thornton, I, listen, I am, I appreciate you all being here. It's great to see activism and the public come out, but in these meetings, you can't yell out. You can speak to your neighbor next to you. I appreciate it.
Could ask that again? Sorry.
So if there was a feasibility study, I think for the PLA, correct? Yeah. Could we put in there that these things need to be met? Like it has to be $44 million or less, I prefer less. It has to be the scope of service that we want. If we want tinted windows at certain degrees, no matter what, and it has to go by that June timeline because we can't as a town afford to miss that because that's on our taxpayers, and I don't want to mess up my constituent base. Can we put those, as a feasibility study, can we make that part of the whole thing? Like saying, this is the only situation that this will ever work?
Certainly, I'm not an expert in this, and I probably defer to the lawyers. But you can put anything you want in a, in a RFP or a feasibility study, ask, right? But I don't just know how realistic it is to say that the price wouldn't go up. It almost seems like a possible proposition to guarantee that.
So we don't know. I guess the unknown question, because I'm obviously, we don't know if we can put in the feasibility study that the max we'll pay is this because we know the max. Like we know the max now to be the $43,279, $498. So obviously, as a committee, to then spend $48 million would not serve our constituents. But the feasibility study, we could put that in there to see if that can be done.
You could do that. And just keep in mind, if you went over for some reason, you would have to either value engineer the project, cut things out, or put more money in from the town or from fund balance. It's one of those two things.
So if, if we approved the GMP tonight, it's still open for anybody for the bidding? The bidding is ongoing for the jobs as it is, but it would mean that we would not be able to get that feasibility study done because you're already going to be moving forward with?
As I understand it, they've been doing some purchasing all along, but it's been kind of a slower process. If you approve the GMP, it would now pick up speed. They have purchasers in, in the companies that do, do the work and, and lock in the folks. And I was told, right now, as of last week's report, they were at 31% locked, if you will, and by tomorrow, projected to be around 60% locked in. So they're purchasing all along, but it would pick up speed now if you were to approve the GMP.
So they have to be, so we can't do in tandem, lock the GMP and do the feasibility study for the PLA? We can't do that in tandem?
I think you can. I think here's the challenge, once again, not being an expert, if they're buying all along, doing these, you know, locking these vendors in, then you were to do that PLA down the road, now you're probably looking at undoing some of the work already done, and that's going to delay things more.
So this may be, this may be a legal question then. I'm so sorry, Mr. Adams. If we approved, is there a way to improve the GMP with only the essentials that need to be begun now for the work to be, to occur while we do a feasibility study? Is there any way to do that so that we're not going out and hiring 100% and setting that all up on things that are not going to be needed or those, those people won't be needed until 2026 or 2027? And I'm trying to find a balance.
If I could start first, I think everything is essential. There's no trade not essential. Some have 15-month lead times, like a switchgear. So there's nothing that you could say, well, we can put that off. It's all, it's game time now for every trade and hiring these things. I would say you really can't put anything off. My opinion.
So we could approve the GMP or not approve the GMP, and I could put on for the next agenda, us as a committee, to discuss a feasibility study for the next agenda in two weeks?
You could certainly do that, but I recommend you approve the GMP tonight.
And then we can figure out in the feasibility study with the PAL, PLA, excuse me, that we want these things met. I don't know legally if that's possible, but, Mr. Adams, sorry.
So I think the challenge, you can do whatever, you're the school committee, so you can vote how you want. Whether what your vote does is going to be feasible and workable, I can't answer that question. I'm, what I'm hearing is that if June 30th of 2027 is a week away in a way of looking I'm, what I'm hearing is that if June 30th of 2027 is a week away in a way of looking at it, it's now, it's, we've got to move fast because we have to meet this deadline. And I think that that's fair. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. So the challenge is each day that you are not able to fill out the schedule is a day that's lost, right? And it potentially has a big impact. So if you approve the GMP, then we know that GMP is $43,279,498. And if you say, but hold off in filling out all the subs and all the things that are part of that work, I don't know what that does to deadlines. I don't know what that does to all of the stuff that is in process. But if you're asking me whether the school committee can do that, I think the school committee can, I just don't know what you're, I would have to look, I actually don't know whether there's some agreement with Consigly or with Colliers that might not allow you to do that, but I can't imagine that there isn't. And I'm trusting that Anne-Marie would be jumping up and down right now saying, they can't do that, it's not, they've already contracted away that right or something like that. I don't think that's the case, but I, I have a similar concern over timing because, you know, $22 million coming back to the town of Cumberland due on a bond is going to have an impact financially if you don't meet that deadline. It's, it's not going to have a $22 million impact because you're going to get that money a year later, but it's not going to be happy time in the town of Cumberland if you don't meet that deadline.
May I just say something, and maybe for everyone who understands? We cannot discuss a feasibility study on the PLA tonight. It was not agended for this meeting, and that is the reason that we can only discuss it as it relates to the GMP. So I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to put off any opportunities or pushing you away. It is just how this is agended, and it would be against the open meetings act if we did that. So.
Mr. Dean?
If we voted, we could discuss it. Made a motion, voted.
We can't discuss it because it didn't give the 48 hours to the public to come out and talk about it. We could agenda it for the next meeting. Does that make sense? Other questions from the committee? The pleasure of the committee. This is, this is a really difficult decision, and this is a real difficult thing. And I don't know what the discussions were previously, but I know that this is coming to us on the school committee now. It was not brought to us earlier, and I think that we're put into a very uncomfortable position, I think, for everyone sitting up here and how we manage this. We have a duty to our students, I'm sorry, Dr. Thornton. Okay. We have a duty to our students to provide them what, you know, we have a duty to our taxpayers to get the most savings that we can from the state. So we have all of these different balances that we have to do, and fiscal and student responsibility. I'm very concerned if we put the GMP vote off tonight, that it could have impact. The idea of doing the feasibility study, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Vogel, and I do think and understand that we should look at that. How we balance it in between those weeks if we were to approve the GMP tonight, I'm not sure. And I don't think anybody here has the right answer for that.
So I'm hearing you say, if they approve the GMP tonight, the feasibility study would go on the next agenda?
Yes.
And we can properly talk about it? Yes, Dr. Thornton?
Mentioned, the building committee took this up on Monday and approved the GMP
The pleasure of the committee? If no one makes a motion, Mr. Adams, what happens?
If there's no action, I'll be, I don't, and we move on. We just note for the record, that's the only time that Mr. Adams has ever received applause in any meeting.
Watch out, they may report again. Pleasure of the committee. I'm taking that as no.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to vote to approve the GMP tonight and really want that feasibility study out there.
So you're motioning to?
I am, and if it doesn't carry, doesn't carry.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Motion to approve, I'm so sorry. Motion to approve the GMP at $43,279,498. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. We're going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Shea?
Approved motion.
Mr. Dean? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Goldstein?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. That passes three to two with Mr. Dean and Ms. Vogel in the negative. And I will be putting the PLA feasibility study on the next agenda in two weeks. I'm going to wait one minute so everyone can clear out, and then we will continue Okay, we are going to reconvene the meeting. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have six resolutions tonight that were discussed in fiscal subcommittee, and they were approved three to zero, SCP, I'm sorry, two to zero, SCPR 10, 2025-134 through 139, and I would move passage of all.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to move passage for resolutions, SCPR 10, 2025, 134 through 139. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills, Ms. Smith?
Yes, we had payment in the bills of the amount of $925,589.56 earlier this evening. That did move, or that did go and pass in our fiscal subcommittee. I'm sorry, I'm exhausted. And I would move passage of the payment of those bills.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to approve the payment of bills on $925,589.56. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Dr. Thornton, do we have to go into executive session?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bacon?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. We adjourn at 8:18 PM. Thank you.